It's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. And we'd also like to have a special welcome for Ms. Mary Julia Proctor, who is taking Mr. Jones' place tonight. And we're glad to have you with us and I hope you enjoy your time on the board. And I want to go around and everybody introduce their self, starting with Dr. Combs. We'll just go around and you know everybody. It's Dr. Combs.
Dr. Combs, superintendent.
Yes.
And Marty Bernison.
Yeah, I know Marty.
Alvis Farrell.
Isaiah Daverson.
Thank you.
Isaiah Daverson.
Daverson.
I'm Steve Clark.
Steve Clark.
Yes, sir.
Grant Shipp, please.
Farrell Vincent.
I'm going to take you under my wing.
And we're glad to have you and enjoy the meeting.
Thank you so much. I've got some big shoes to fill, but I think I'm up for the job.
I think you've been around Tipton County a long time.
All my life.
We have, that's right. We have all the confidence in the world in you, okay?
And we have another woman on the door.
What's happening around here?
At this time, we was standing for the pledge and remain standing for a moment. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be seated, please. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Daverson, second by Mr. Shipp. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Are there any additions to the agenda? Would anyone like to remove any item from the consent agenda for the discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by?
I make the motion.
Mr. Clark, the second by?
I second.
Mr. Lawrence, I'm Clark. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no, the motion passed. Uh, Dr. Combs, superintendent, update.
Yes, sir. Right, y'all, mine's going to be pretty quick, believe it or not. No applause necessary. Before I do mine, I want to show you this. Crestview Middle sent this up today. They, you know, some folks will do their school board appreciation piece at the next meeting because, you know, it's coming up in a couple of weeks. But they did theirs early. So their art class made this for y'all. And I was going to show you, that's why I set it up. But it's basically, that's the front of Crestview Elementary School. They even got the little bus that's drawn on there in the front. And it says, "Attention, Tipton County School Board members. Crestview Elementary would like to thank you for all your hard work and dedication. Hashtag reliable, devoted, irreplaceable. Board members, thank you to Tipton County Schools." Pretty neat, looks like a little TV and everything.
That's good.
Yeah. That was Crestview Elementary School made that for y'all.
Is that your picture driving the bus?
That's not me.
That's like, "Thank you to Crestview Middle School."
Elementary.
Elementary.
Crestview Elementary School.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, so before I have Hunter Poncho come up, there's one resolution in your folders. I just put it in there today. I talked to Tommy Donovan. If you'll look, it looks like this. This is a hazard mitigation plan. This is a resolution that I need y'all to vote on and let me know if you're okay with it. And while you're reading through it, let me explain it. So basically, I had a meeting with, as the rest of the county did with TIMA, which is the Emergency Management Association for Tennessee, a few months ago. And there are a number of grants that are available that we can apply for, for different things. The two main things that we did was I want to get new natural gas generators for every school. And we want to retrofit a number of our hallways in our schools as storm shelters. So, you know, right now, the only really tornado safe tornado shelter school we have, Atoka has that wing in it, right? It was done a few years ago. But with TIMA funds, we can possibly do that retrofit. I had Hunter come with me to the last meeting to make sure I was understanding everything correctly. And then also get these generators. So this resolution has to be in place for me to give it to Tommy Donovan, for him to send into the state, for us to be eligible for applying for these grants. Did I say that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. So that's why I put it in there for you. And then if y'all are okay with this, then I will sign it. And Mr. Marty will sign it. And I'll give it to Mr. Donovan tomorrow, so we can do that. But basically, just so the people on air and behind me can know what this says, it says, "The Tipton County Board of Education recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to people and property. Undertaking hazard mitigation actions before disasters occur will reduce the potential for harm to people and property and save taxpayer dollars. An adopted hazard mitigation plan is required as a condition of future grant funding for mitigation projects." And we are a part of the Tipton County Hazard Mitigation Plan, right? This is just for the school system here to get these things. "Tipton County Board of Education participated jointly in the planning process with other local units of government within the county to prepare this hazard mitigation plan. Now therefore be resolved, Tipton County Board of Education hereby adopts the Tipton County Hazard Mitigation Plan as an official plan. And be it further, the Tipton County Emergency Management Agency will submit on behalf of participating municipalities and Tipton County Board of Education the adopted hazard mitigation plan to the Federal Emergency Management Agency officials for final review and approval." So again, this basically just means that if we submit this, then we are eligible for us to start filling out and submitting grants to be able to do those things I talked about. And that would be generators for the schools and also to retrofit some of our hallways as storm shelters, for not just school, but for community as well, should it have been bad. But I can't even start that process until we have a resolution.
I make a motion to adopt the hazard mitigation resolution.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Clark, second by Mr. Shipp. Are there any questions about it? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion passed.
Thank you all. I appreciate that. I will get that signed and get that to Mr. Tommy tomorrow. And at this point, I will yield the podium to Mr. Hunter.
Well, it was definitely an exciting Christmas time for the school system. Of course, we started at Tipton High School with our bathroom renovations. And I will tell you guys, I've been part of quite a few projects over the years. And this one probably yielded the most appreciation that I've been a part of. The excitement that really came from the staff, from the students. Something that's definitely well deserved. And I'll just direct you to the, I can work this, to the, where we started at back in, somewhere around 83. As you'll see here, the colorful, nice architectural choices that they made back in the day. Then they were nice choices. However, we'll fast forward to what we've been fortunate enough to, with the help of Dr. Combs and his color choices, we do now have four bathrooms at Tipton High School that have been completely renovated. We were successful in, let me guess, we were successful in touchless faucets, urinals, as well as the toilets, subdispensers and paper towel dispensers. So along with COVID and the spreading of the germs, we now, I feel like we're headed in the right direction in offering them a safer environment. And one that smells much better. Miss here, guys, this is just a little virtual tour of one of the bathrooms, but thought it'd be worthwhile, since you guys probably don't have the time to come, come by, this would be what these guys are very excited to have.
Did you end up doing the battery operated stuff, were you with the power?
We did. We are right now battery operated with the time, with the time. As far as to get the scope of work changed, that is in our future to see how we can potentially get a electrician involved and to keep that within budget. We did, we do have the service master who's we partnered with on this project to see how we can keep that, get that to be an option, to keep our battery costs down.
I will say, they were very thankful. Everybody was really, that Covington was like, man, these things really look good. Well, we have a couple of folks there that can tell us. But it's just what's really too bad is that we can't do a scratching sniff on this board. It's unreal.
We take your work.
It's unreal. How much better do you smell?
Very, and again, it was very challenging to hit the deadline. But the teams, our partners on this project, I mean, they worked, they worked all the way up. They took off Christmas Eve, but they went back the day after Christmas. They worked New Year's Eve, worked all the way up until the day before the students were in, so.
They were doing some there, New Year's Day.
Yeah. They were very committed to making sure that these were done on time. And it was very much a challenge, but they are very excited about moving forward. And again, the appreciation, it's not hard to work for people that are greatly appreciating what you're offering them. So know that the school system, and they're very, very thankful for what we are doing for them. We are, this is the homeschool gym project, as you can see, guys. I mean, very, very much past due, but it is underway. Just another one of the wings that we were able, this is again, another shot from the homeschool gym. We are on a, again, like I told you in the last meeting, on a material shortage. So not really sure as to when we're going to receive all of our schools. But the good news is CIAA material started arriving today. Should have the remainder of the material tomorrow. And whether pending, we will be starting that school ASAP. And so possibly as early as Monday.
Were you doing restrooms there too?
Well, we're doing just the roofs.
Oh, I see.
This is the roof, back to the roof projects now. We will be doing the restrooms there, yes. We're going to do, we can do the roof projects whilst school is actually in session. We can move forward with that. But as far as the restroom projects, that's going to be a summer school, that's going to be summertime. We're going to try to knock out some during our breaks, fall break and spring break. But with the potential of having to shut water off to the school for whatever reason, we don't want to take the chance of us being the reason that we have to send the kids home. Leave that to other municipalities. But we are planning to do the restroom project during the summer break primarily. We've got, we're going to come up with a plan to, I know summer school is still something that's new, but we're going to try to consolidate kids to where we can get into at least two schools in each area during the summer. So that's a plan that we've still got to work out the details on. And Ms. Roselle, we were successful in digging concrete for the drums.
Yes.
So I give praise on that. You guys should be able to exercise in the light and feel safe going to your cars in the evening. Thank y'all for the time. But there again, guys, thank y'all for the opportunity. And I wish I could really pour out the appreciation that the staff and the students have for the projects that they were taking, that from the roofs not leaking, you know, leaking during class to the, to now the bathrooms actually coming to life. And they believe that this really is going to happen. It's not just somebody says that we may do something. And so they're pretty excited about it, so.
I want to say thank you to you, girls. I've had, I've had a few people brag on me, or brag on you to me and how good a job you're doing and how you've taken this under in such a short time.
Well, I do appreciate it.
Taking control of it and really done a good job, so.
Well, thank you very much. It's definitely an honor to give back to a full community, to a county that obviously that I grew up in, to be able to help much more than just a few homeowners on projects. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, we appreciate it. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ben.
Thanks, honor.
Mr. Poncho, show me.
Yes, sir. I thank you all for letting me be up here tonight. It's a lot I want to say, and I'm going to try to condense it. And I feel like I'm drinking from a fire hydrant on some things. We've had a pretty busy schedule. So one thing I want to say is I'm really trying to get my feet up on it like maybe last month, trying to get the computer set up and office space to work from and whatever. So we're getting started there. But all that to say this, we've managed our third SRO meeting where everybody come together. And Dr. Combs was all of them but one that he couldn't make. And also, Mr. Turner. So it really meant a lot to the SROs and all their needs. And they listened and went through and a lot of that showed when we had a meeting yesterday evening at the EMA building in Brighton. And we had that meeting at four o'clock. One of the SROs, Chris Atkinson, he said, "Let's do it at four and we won't take away from any of the security time during the week." And I can really appreciate that. He, that it worked out real well. But our third meeting, we had everybody represented. We had Covington Police Department with Chief Howell and his staff. We had the Sheriff's Office, Tipton County, with Sheriff Beasley and some of his staff. Brighton Police Department with Chief Durham and some of his staff. Atoka Police Department with Chief Rudolph and some of his staff. Mufford Police Department with Captain Toby and some of his staff. And it really is, the third meeting is getting better. A lot of networking is really what we're looking for. That way, getting everybody on the same page, so to speak. So it's, that's going good. I'm very pleased with it and the dialogue that we're hearing. And also, Dr. Combs and Mr. Glenn Turner were there yesterday as well, and they were very pleased. One of the main topics of concern out of the meetings is they always go back to the cameras, the cameras in the schools. And that's something there that they constantly talk about. So Dr. Combs has already come up with a situation there and a plan to have a person dedicated to the cameras. And they were, they were talking about that after he left, you know, standing in the parking lot. So that was good there. And they were appreciative. But the other thing we're doing too, sorry, as far as some of the communication thing and getting on the same page, is a little simple deal called a WhatsApp. And a lot of law enforcement use WhatsApp. And what happened is encrypted. But the WhatsApp, Dr. Combs is on it, Mr. Glenn Turner, me, and all the SROs. At any point that we need to get a message out from to, vice versa, back forth. And also, we could FaceTime if need be and meet Zoom, so to speak. We can do that. So that's helped out real well too, so far, to get messages back and forth and a little dialogue there. And again, on the same page, so to speak. Also, while Dr. Combs is having a point person, so to speak, to be dedicated to the cameras, while that's in the works as well, Mr. Turner is also doing some things with the cameras and also having a DVR upgrade and whatever. So that's kind of a double whammy, which is a great thing so far. We also were talking about in the meeting there with the other municipal chiefs and the sheriff of trying to get an upgrade or a standardized operation procedure on body worn cameras with the SROs. So that was good. Bike detectors, that's a new thing to me. But I heard reports there and we asked in front of everybody in all the municipalities where represented and they said, "Yeah, they're going good, working good." So that's a good thing. Also in there too, I accompanied the drug dog to some of the schools. And that was very interesting. It's been a long time since I got to do that. And I was very happy, nothing bad was found. So that was really good on several of the schools. And I enjoyed that and a good setup there. Dog was very, very good at what he was doing. And I was pleased at the thoroughness and all that was going on. Also, we talked about each school has the handheld metal detectors and they use those as needed. And everything's working there with those. Also, the vandal resistant sheeting, Mr. Turner was telling me, Mr. Glenn was telling me about vandal resistant sheeting to put on the glass doors on the ones on the schools that needed and doing that in phases. And what that would do is slow down and deter somebody from breaking in, as far as the daytime especially. So that was good there. It's something that he was looking into and have that started. The SROs also will have another option via Navigate on the web to go at any point when there's an upgrade. And when I say an upgrade, let me say that's a change or an amendment or whatever with the current crisis policy that we have with the school system. And they can go to Navigate and they can view that. But that has to be controlled. And Mr. Turner was talking about where he could give the access as needed to each of the SROs or whoever's designated. So that's going to be a controlled access deal. But if any changes or amendments come up, they'll be able to look at that as they go. So that's the way I understand that now, and I really like that. That way, what's on policy page, whatever, they can go to that on their phone or their computer. Also, something else very pleasing is the, all the law enforcement agencies, they have been planning this for a while, but due to different things that's going on, as we well know in the last couple of years, they were talking about it again yesterday. And they're planning a joint exercise with all agencies in the county, along with the Sheriff's Office. And also going to invite the Tennessee Highway Patrol and the Tennessee Wildlife Resource Agency to come in and participate and see what's going on in the joint exercise. Anything from an active school shooter would be one of the main topics to start off with. And they're looking forward to that. I think it's going to go well. The big thing is, again, everybody getting together and they're talking and say, "Hey, I've got that tight problem here." And, "Oh, we got that. Here's what we did to correct it and it's working well." So I like it. Everybody seems to really enjoy that. But anyway, that's where we at. The big thing too, again, several things that we could take out of the meeting, but the active shooter training and other training is going to start like the first or second week of February next month. So I'm looking forward to that. And again, I think Dr. Combs, not only talking about it here at the board and Mr. Turner, but also getting down there like they do in the middle of it. And they're there at the meeting and they're looking at the needs and they're already coming through. Well, again, the biggest thing was the cameras. And here he was, come down, you know, and that's valuable. And it goes a long ways. I want to say this too, personally and professionally, from what I've seen so far, I feel very confident with our SROs. I like where they're at, like where they're headed. And that makes me feel good. It really does. The better I get to know them, the more confident I am. And I'll get to hear them talk. Some sharp people out there, it really is. All right. Thank you so much. And have any questions for me?
I have a real quick one.
Yes, sir.
So if we have a community event take place, like a shooting, say, let's just take the shooting that happened in November at Covington. I think it was November, right?
It was October.
Or October.
It was October.
Okay. What kind of measures do we take to amp up security around those schools when something like that happens? Even though it wasn't school related.
On school ground, but near the school?
But what are we doing to protect our kids coming into and out of schools after an event like that?
Unless it's something different that I'm not aware about what happens. If something happens in the immediate area of the school or the schools, then the school's going on immediate lockdown right there in, say, that school. And then the law enforcement knows usually what happened. If it's something really close, you'll have them going around the outer perimeter. And you'll have like on all sides, police car, sheriff's deputy, whatever the case may be, set on whatever points they do it with two cars or four, whatever the case may be, to help secure that school till that incident's over.
Okay. But that even takes place a few days after?
It depends on the nature of it and what happens. Is anybody in custody and then what's, yeah, it can. And we've done that before.
Okay.
And Mr. Clark, he was, Poncho and his staff and Covington PD were very instrumental in like games following that, the following day, et cetera. They beefed up security at that game. They even had extra security travel with the group that went after that, just, you know, as a precaution. If nothing else, it made people feel better.
And you, you've answered that for me privately, but I want people to hear what we're doing. I've had some parents contact me about how we're handling security around those issues. And I want our parents to feel, I want them to know their kids are safe when they're at school. I think that's our job number one. And we will have someone at each school monitoring the camera?
As far as in real time, no, sir. But they do it as needed, as far as I know, yes. But they can go in, go back at any point and monitor. And I know it's been some talks, but no, sir, not right now, it's not, not real time.
Right now, they usually use it, Mr. Isaiah, to go back and check on incidents that happened or review other things that have happened. But we don't have somebody that sits and just monitors the camera all day. But I will say, we have various people who have access to the cameras. Like I've got every camera in every school on my computer in my office. Mr. Poncho has it, Glenn has it, a number, we've even got where the, you know, Sheriff's Department and PD can look at it as well. So, you know, we can access it from anywhere at any time. And we don't have anybody that sits on it, you know, real time right now.
Just a quick question. Do we ever have any drills in schools other than fire drills? Or is it considered too traumatic for the students?
Well, there has been, but exactly what you're talking about, and I'll go down and talk a lot further, but exactly what you're talking about is what's coming up. And, oh, yes, sir.
That's going to be during school?
It's coming up, but I don't think they're going to do it during the school, this first one. But I would love to discuss, but there was a lot of discussion yesterday.
We have, the first ones that we did, probably just involve faculty, not kids yet. And then we'll progress into the other ones. But they do have intruder drills at the school.
That's right.
They do those twice a year.
At least twice a year.
Yeah. But not to the extent of what he's talking about that's coming up. We're talking about a full blown, you know, real, real time situation.
Exactly what you're.
Start with the faculty.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
It's great.
Yes, sir. It'll be weird. Matter of fact, they have you signed up to be the villain. I already had that figured out. We have your costume ready. Hey, let me, can I add two things real quick? I just want to say, number one, I want to give a big shout out to Kevin, who's back there running our audio equipment. Kevin and the technology team have really stepped up, even outside of their already hectic schedule, to do a lot of help with the cameras. Because when, you know, we had an issue with the cameras, it used to be done in maintenance, but then that person left. And then, you know, technology has really stepped in and been helping us in the gap there. We're trying to outsource some of it, but sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. Folks don't show up like they're supposed to. And so Kevin and his staff, so thank you for doing that. You've had to really step in and help with that. And also, I want to give the, you know, Mr. Poncho being here has been awesome. I mean, having a, having a point person to connect with the SROs and gather them together, who has the law experience and the law enforcement experience that he does, I mean, you know, he has more experience than most of the people I know. So they react very well to him. And I know they feel comfortable talking to him and share. They've shared some things with him that I didn't even know about because they didn't want to tell the layman, but they can tell somebody who has experience doing that. And it's really been beneficial already, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chubb.
Thank you.
Good to report. Dr. Bird.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start tonight congratulating our Teacher of the Month. This month, we have Ms. Leslie Christian from Drummond's Elementary School. And I want to read what her principal wrote about her as she nominated Ms. Christian. Ms. Christian has the biggest heart and was put on this earth to be a teacher. She conquers every challenge with a smile on her face. That is true. She used to work at Atoka with me, so I know this firsthand. She's knowledgeable and will move mountains to ensure that every student has his or her needs met, not only in the classroom, but personal needs as well. No one cares more than Ms. Christian. And we are blessed to have her at Drummond's Elementary School with an exclamation point. So at this time, we'll ask Ms. Christian to come up. And Mr. Grant Skelton from American Fidelity will present her with her award. So Ms. Christian, come on up. She truly is a gem, y'all. She is awesome, as are, as are all of our teachers.
Dr. Bird, you're the one that hung on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Christian.
Appreciate it.
I didn't want to freak her out too much and tell her she had to give a speech. She is an excellent teacher. Along those lines, yesterday, I sent you an email with our 13th school level Teachers of the Year. And I am going to read those out loud tonight because I want to honor them for our audience who are, who will be watching tonight. So Austin P. Elementary, Ms. Nicole Walker. Atoka Elementary, Angie Pike. Brighton Elementary, Joy Wright. Crestview Elementary, Brandy Warman. CIAA, Ms. Lena Heron. Drummond's Elementary, Christie Reed. Muncroft Elementary, Winnie Murchison. Brighton Middle School, Benita Bibb. Crestview Middle School, Deborah Walker. Muncroft Middle School, John Zubiate. Brighton High School, Ms. Angela Clark. I think Mr. Clark knows her. Covington High School, Mary Danielle King. And Muncroft High School is Ms. Jen Tyler. And from this group, we've selected our district level Teachers of the Year. And they are, in pre-K through four, Ms. Nicole Walker from Austin P., grades five through eight, Ms. Deborah Walker from Crestview Middle. And representing high school will be Jen Tyler from Muncroft High School. And y'all, we are, we're blessed to have excellent teachers. And I'm so pleased that we can honor them. I wish we could honor them all in that way. But we did have to select three to represent the district to move on in that process. But we just appreciate all of their hard work. And I must publicly say thank you to, to that group of dedicated professionals. Two more things. We are currently reviewing our progress on our five-year strategic plan that you're all familiar with. And we, our plan is to provide you an update with that information at the February meeting. So something for you to look forward to. And then the last thing I'll say, tonight, we have Covington High School Hosted Teachers Year and they're going to talk to you about their program. You know, last month Brighton High came and talked about culinary arts. So tonight, we have Ms. Tab McDivitt and Ms. Jen Downing. And I'm going to turn the floor over to them. They're going to talk to you about HOSA. So ladies, come on up.
We're going to kind of be over here because this remote doesn't want to work with this night. So we're going to kind of work from over here. I'm Tab McDivitt. I actually teach diagnostic medicine, pharmacy technician, health science, and medical therapeutics and clinical internship at the high school.
I'm Jennifer Downing. I teach med term, anatomy and physiology EMS. And I'm currently teaching a Doesburg State dual enrollment certified nursing assistant.
And we are both nurses, if y'all didn't notice that.
I was going to talk to y'all about, we started CNA program last year. We got a grant from the state of Tennessee. It's called a GRI, give, gift grant. And aid schools in West Tennessee, it was a total of $1 million. It was a one-time award, a grant. And Covington High School received $45,000. And we turned, in our department, we turned our office into a hospital room. So it took us, I spent just about every bit of that. Very proud of the, the students are very proud of it as well. So we started this program. It consists of 100 hours minimum, 40 hours lecture, 20 hours lab, 40 hours clinical, with at least 24 hours in long-term care. But because the pandemic that occurred, of course, we started this program in the middle of a pandemic. But we did get to go to Covington Care. We contracted out with them through Doesburg State, the nursing home. And we did get some hours in. So I was proud they let us in. And of course, I had parent meetings and we all went through that. But it turned out really good. We didn't get quite that many hours, but at least they got some. They worked very, very hard. And Tab helped me as well, as well as Doesburg State. But we had six CNA students. They told me to start out with less than 10 and six signed up. We had 100% pass rate. So I was very, very proud of them. They worked very hard. And then this year, and those were all girls. This year, I have five girls and two boys. So of course, y'all knows men are now in nursing as well and they're very excited. Last year, what I want to tell you, at the end of the year, they have a Tennessee test observer comes in and we kind of close our department off. It takes all day to test them. They have a written test, which is online, and then they have to do five skills. They don't know which skills the test observer is going to ask of them, but they have 35 minutes to do those skills. And they just, they blew it out of the park. So I was so proud of them, but anyway. So she's going to talk to you about her clinicals class now.
My clinical internship classes, they're placed, this year, they will be placed in medical doctors' offices. I've already had Red Med and St. Francis, Rosemary Jacobs is kind of getting it worked out. She's pretty sure she is. And easily and Delonas, of course, is going to let, let the kids come in there. And they're going to actually get to do their clinical internship there because they're going to be taking the CCMA, which is a medical assistant certification class at the end of the year. And hopefully, they'll get that certification. And they all get their CPR certification and their OSHA-10 certification. So it's pretty good because they can leave high school and go to work. While they're in college or whatever they're wanting to do, they can go to work right then. Just like with the CNAs, two of Jen's CNAs, I work at the nursing home on the weekend. So two of the girls that got to go in there. They work there. They work with me, you know, on the weekend. So it's a great program while they're going to college. And this is our CNA hospital room that, the money that Doesburg saved at $45,000. Did, really did, so. These are all the certifications we have at Covington High School. The CCMA is new this year, Farm Tech, CNA, and their OSHA-10. These are students that actually take their OSHA-10 certification.
We got Harvey's name. Harvey helps pay for that, Harvey Rinton. We love Harvey.
If it wasn't for Harvey, we wouldn't get him.
That's right. So we hear horror, I'm telling you truth, we go to conferences, he sends us. And y'all, y'all just wouldn't believe the horror stories we hear from other nurses or health science teachers that just don't have that support from their CTE director. And rarely, now, he says no. He's thought about it, but he always has a yes. Whatever it is for students, and he's not here tonight, so, but he didn't pay us the same. He's fantastic. We are so proud of, of being working with him and for him, so.
They can also get there, all of the clinicals and CNAs and EMS class students are all healthcare provider, American Heart Association CPR certified. So they can leave, already have that applied to nursing school, already have that as a checkmark before they ever have to get there. And SERP, and Jen does that.
I do a community emergency response team. I partner with Covington Fire Department. We go out there and do our skills and Richard Griggs helps me certify them in something called SERP. And that's kind of like a, I would say it's kind of like, well.
Mass casualty.
Yeah, mass casualty. It's after disaster. They will be trained volunteers, ready to go. So, and I've been doing that for several years. So, and it, it's just worked out great, that partnership. And Richard's the same way of Covington Fire Department. Anything we ever need, they are always right there and I just appreciate him so much, so. Technology, CTE funded, of course, by, and I put a smiley face there because I'm Harvey. But we, we use technology. Of course, every student has a device this year and we're so thankful for that. Of course, we, we set up Google Classroom. If they're home quarantining, they know exactly what's going on in our classroom. And Tab's going to talk to you about AES.
AES is also known as Health Center 21. It is actually, and some of y'all may have seen it on Your Clever or whatever, but it is a program that is bought for all the health science students that are in, at Covington High School and in other schools. But we saw this at something we went to, something Harvey sends us to, and it wasn't great. And I'm telling you, this is where this program, he actually came here and I think Dr. Burge spoke with him that day. But it's kind of like, I'll just, it's a, it's an online platform, basically, just like the rest of Google Classroom and all of that, but it's just healthcare-related. So basically, if you want to look at that, I can show y'all that later.
We'll go back. We thought it would stay signed in.
Yeah, we thought it would stay signed in, so sorry.
I do want to show you, this is something I'm piloting, Go React. Last year, when we were coming, the students were coming four days a week and, you know, teachers had that time. We used that time very wisely because I didn't really know how. It takes so much time to test students on these skills. They have 20, on CNA program, they have 23 skills. We had five skills Friday. Tab helped me. She would take a student and I would take a student. It took us hours to judge them and then we had to teach. So we had that time. So I thought, how am I going to do that this year and get them passing? And one of the things we came across at one of the conferences that Harvey sends us to is something called Go React. And I hope this will pull up here. And I'm going to show you what, so they, like January, I'm just doing skills, skills, skills with them, trying to get them ready for their state test. I'm going to have to sign it, it looks like. Tab, if you would kind of talk to me. Oh, yeah. Oh, it's good, good, good. So.
Oh, Mrs. Walker.
No, that's okay. I'm going to do it here. Okay. You can see, I can grade them. So what happens, like this week, I, I watched three of them. It took me today to watch three of them this week to do skills, but today it took me two hours and a half. I have them two blocks. And, but I have seven students. And I need to be doing three skills each week to get them ready. So half of them will take their skills. And this is real time. They can go back and see, they can, let me just show you. It's just easier to show you. Let's do Bree here. Okay, so here comes Bree. If you can see, I am commenting on things she's doing right, things she's doing wrong. And you'll see it pop up.
The good thing about this, though, when we saw it, a lot of the colleges are doing this now. So the kids are going to have to get used to that anyway.
Especially in, in medical. You're going to be video when you go, you'll have to set up a video. So she can see what happens when they do so many skills. They don't remember where they messed up. And this shows it right here. And I have a rubric too that I grade. I have the rubric right beside it and I'm checking, just like a test observer would do. So this is, this is a fantastic program. And hopefully, next year, the other two schools will be able to use that in their CNA program. And there's other ways you can use this besides nursing as well. But I appreciate, Harvey just said yes when I asked him and I appreciate that so much. But you can see, I said excellent checking temperature of water. She can see, and she has to comment back to me after she watches, sees my comments. So she'll know, don't waste time checking temperature of water. Because she's timed, and look, she said it took her 11 minutes to do this skill. So I say, on this long skill, you need to be on her nine minutes. So it just helps them with the time management and beef up their game when it comes to skills. So if I got questions about that, but it's, it is coming, it's just worked out really good. The children, the kids like it. And of course, they like using their phone to video, right?
But she can grade it when she gets up at like 4:00 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I grade on the clock.
You know, I like to get my sleep, but she's up at 4:00, so she does that. So one of the things that we're getting with the Escher grant money that all the three high schools are getting is called an animage table. And it is one of the best things ever. A lot of colleges already have it. The only other high school I know in Tennessee that has it, maybe more.
Cleveland, I think.
But Cleveland High School is the only one that I've seen and I've heard talk about it. Just a quick video on it. It is really, really.
It'll begin in one second.
The animage table is an interactive place for anatomy education. It is capable of providing full-body anatomy visualizations at a life-size scale. So this is a skeleton of a, of a real patient. It developed tissue off. So I cut across here. If I press there, I get rid of it. Then I can turn the skeleton. And I can see the blood vessels. Structures can be toggled by tapping the on and off icon next to the desired structure, category, or system.
Wish I had this when I was a freshman.
There are ways you can dissect animals in here. There are all different kinds of tissues.
So I can use this too.
Teach medical students how to evaluate the lungs for cystic fibrosis or pulmonary fibrosis or tumors. It also simulates an operation table. As if you were confronting a patient or cadaver. The tension or active controls are natural and intuitive. Again, strengthen the concept of being present with a full-body life-size patient or cadaver. The table comes loaded with a full-body CT scan enhanced with custom anatomical models. What you see here is the skin model. The scalpel tool can be used to create custom cut planes. And then it can be rotated to see the volume record underneath with the digital models. To get all the latest news, visit www.beholdthefuture.com.
All right. And that's one of the things we're getting with our Escher money, a big ticket item. All three schools are getting that. And then all three schools will be getting the Alex simulator. I don't know, all of the nursing schools, every med school, everywhere has Alexes. And they all, some of them can do, have babies, some of them can do everything. So all of us will be getting one of those. And I don't know if y'all have ever seen them, but they talk to you. Their pupils dilate, they have lung sounds, they do everything that a human would do. And it's been pre-programmed in. So you can kill this patient and it will not cause any problems. So that's, that's the thing about this patient. So, and you can always look at the video if you would like to see that. I know time is an essence here, so. But here's a little bit about our HOSA.
Yes, we have HOSA club members and we also have competitions, as well, as y'all well know. But of course, pandemic has took a toll on us, but hopefully, we'll go to state this year. We had grigles this past week.
So these are some of our community partners that we always do. If you notice, TCAT, we take our students out to TCAT to see what they can do after. This is Doesburg State. Some of our former students are there that always show us.
Jackson State.
Jackson State. This is medical.
Van Winkle County. The air ambulance, we took them this year to the air ambulance wings over there. We've done community, of course, partner with Covington Fire Department. We go to Mid-South Mission of Mercy, those who are interested in dental clinic. That's a free dental clinic at Bellevue Baptist. We also have taught community. This was, we get Methodist North. Our kids are there helping them practice SURGE, thank goodness, because they're surgeon right now. So that's Methodist North. I take my, our kids there. I think I hit it too much. But anyway, this is just some things. American Cancer Society, that's our former student there, Elizabeth Newman. Here we are, Bitten Decon at Baptist Tipton. We helped them practice the SURGE. And aren't we glad we helped the hospital practice SURGE? So we do that every year.
Who's the guy on the top there? Is he a former student?
Here we are at Farm Bureau, teaching Stop the Bleed. So we, we partner with a lot of community businesses here and entities, so.
So our tagline is endless possibilities. How about that? All right, any questions?
What percentage of your students do you think continue on in the nurses field or healthcare field or something like that?
I'm sure Ms. Shires has that.
Yeah, I would say, would you say 60?
I would.
Let me tell you, I'm just, I've been the patient in the hospital, my family. Every time I go to Baptist East, it's one of my kids. I go to Tipton, I go to Methodist North. It's somebody we have taught. And, and, but this is it. We won't, Tipton County taking care of Tipton County. You know, when we had that rural metro, now we're back at Baptist EMS. We need our people to, we, we know our people here and, and that's the best, that's what drives us. We want to, even though we have kids working at Tipton, but our people go to Methodist North and Baptist East and it's, and it's wonderful to see a familiar face that, you know, and I was a patient, I'm going to say your teacher. I'm not going to.
They're going to take care of us one day. So we want to make sure they're, we've got those kids there.
And my, my husband's in the hospital and turn around, here comes one of my students, you know, and my mom went in ambulance and here's one of my students taking care of my mom. So that's what I tell him, you never know who's going to be standing over you with a needle. Be nice always, always. But thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all. Congratulations.
One more quick thing.
Thank you all very much. That was very, very, very good presentation.
Harvey couldn't be here tonight. He is at a school function. He's at something at Covington High School. So I'll just. But I'll just speak briefly for him. These ladies do an amazing job. You can see from, from what they showed you tonight. And I would encourage you, if you get the chance, to go by Covington High School and see these health science classes and, and the other two high schools as well. And see this in action is so impressive. And with the new equipment that they're getting, we're so excited. So as Director of Construction, it just, it does my heart proud to see, to see all of the possibilities for our students. It's just amazing work. And then the last thing I'll say, I also need to announce Principal of the Year for Tipton County Schools this year is Dr. Courtney Fee from Muncford High School. And Supervisor of the Year is Mr. James Fields, who works here as People's Services. And that's all I have unless somebody has questions.
Any questions for Dr. Burge? Thank you, Dr. Burge.
Thank you.
Financial report, Mr. Billy Daughery.
That's a tough act to follow. But I think we'll have a math lab now if y'all don't mind. Let's start with the financial report if you would. But I'll get out for the month ending December the 31st. Should look like this with a packet. We'll start with the 141 general purpose school budget. For the month of December, we received a little over $12 million and expended a little, close to $7 million. For the 142 federal projects fund budget, revenue for $1,648,999.40 and expenditures a little over a million. For central cafeteria, for the month of December, $627,513.96 and expenditures $465,643.74. And 177 capital projects, we have activity in December. And so we are blending that money down. There was obviously no revenue, but there were $27,329 in expenditures. So that is the monthly standard for December.
Go ahead and approve this part. Go ahead and approve this part, this service. Do we have a motion to approve financial report that's presented? We have a motion by Mr. Vincent, a second by Mr. Farrell, Mr. Laus, Farrell. Are there any questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion pass.
Right, the next item we'll have will be these internal school fund audits, be the two blue books that you have. You have a very thin book and those, that book is for those charged with governance of the schools, which obviously, as you all. And so you have a copy of that, as well as the full audit and explanation, which is the second book. I would just ask that the board take that under advisement, review.
Anybody going to jail?
No, sir.
All right.
We ain't going to jail.
No, sir. No, sir, all right. The, moving to amendments. So we're going to start, the only amendments we have tonight are in the 142 federal school projects. And we've reached that point where we have to go to perportage the landscape. So the, let me grab my sheets of our explanations. They'll tell you what we'll have, so we can take these up in separate motions. We have, I believe, it's going to be five different, actually six different programs that we're amending in the 142 tonight. The only change to the budget is we received, and this will be the first amendment, and that we received $14,521.84 of carryover funds from the very first ESSER. So ESSER 1, $14,521.84. And that money will be expended further down in the budget in the 72210.
Are we, are we doing well with the feds or whomever we have to go through about getting reimbursed and things of that nature?
Yes, we, we order revenue every week.
So it's not a problem, I mean, there are no delays or anything like that?
No jinxes, no, sir. So far, so good. Takes about seven days, from the day we order revenue to the time it hits the trustee, which we know that. So we stay on plan schedule and everything cycles through as it should. There's always some encumbrances out there, but typically speaking, within seven days, there's revenue.
We need to approve this, right?
Yes, for ESSER 1, carryover funds, $14,521.84.
Do we have a motion to approve that? Motion by Ms. Rozelle, a second by Mr. Clarkin. Are there any questions, but those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second we'll take up are the ESSER 2 amendments. And those are no change to fund balance. It's basically just a reorganization based on student and need. And we've obviously seen some price increases on some of our previously approved projects. So we're having to move some money around to accommodate for some of those price increases. Some of that nice shiny things that Hunter was showing you earlier, prices are going up.
Where are we now, Billy?
We're on the ESSER 2 funding, it's inside the, there's no change, there's no new revenue. It's just intra-fund transfers. But it's dispersed out between two and three different line item or categories, funds. I can go through them individually, basically we're going to be moving around about $392,000. But we're taking out in 722, if you look at the 7100, I'm sorry, 7100, 722, we're going to move about $392,000. And it's going to be dispersed out for the majority of it inside the 7100 with one item going to the 72250, which is technology. And the others are 72620. And again, there's no change in the amount of funding they're giving us and no change in the amount we're spending. It's just changing the location which it's being spent from to make adjustments and changes.
Do we have a motion to approve that? Motion by Ms. Proctor, a second by Mr. Vincent. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion pass.
Our third amendment is going to be on our Title I funds. Again, this, just like ESSER 2, there's no change to fund balance, no change to revenue, just intra-fund transfers to make adjustments for different expenditures that will pricing changes. It totals about $2,595 total for Title I.
Do we have a motion to approve that? I make a motion by Mr. Clark, a second, let me just, Mr. Shublin, go on. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion pass.
The fourth one is a significant change in Title IV of an entire $5. That we had to move, the government had us move $5 out of the 7100, 429, to the 7210, 210 to cover some, just a slight change in expenditure. And so that is the only change for Title IV. Again, no change to fund balance, revenue or expenditures, they're just reallocated.
Do we have a motion to approve? I feel safe in making that motion, motion by Mr. Farrell, a second by Ms. McClarkin. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion pass.
Our fifth budget to take up tonight is the pre-school instructional grant. Again, there is no change to revenue and no change to fund balance, but there are intra-fund transfer in the 71200 of $13,000 to cover medical insurance for employees that's been hired.
Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Shublin, a second by Mr. Clark. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
The last budget amendment that we'll have tonight is 21st Century Community Learning Grants, which you all know as Project Succeed. And so there's going to be a change, there's no change to fund balance. Again, these are reallocations within the budget, no new money, no new expenditures other than reallocations of funds across both the 217 cohort and the 218 cohort projects in Succeed.
Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Clark, a second by Mr. Davidson. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion pass.
All right, and just for your reference, without taking into account the $14,000 you all voted into the budget tonight, the school budget is now up to $140,358,249.15 from our original appropriations due to the grant money. Are there any other questions for Mr. Daughery? Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Thank you, Hunter.
Mr. Daughery, thank you. Are there any other business, anybody? Dr. Conville, do you have anything?
No, really, just thank y'all, we got a lot of money coming in and out, trying to do good things with it, as you can see, so. You know, keep me on to ask some questions if you have any.
Dr. Conville.
Yes, sir.
What percent of that money is earmarked?
Which, of the ESSER money?
Right.
Is earmarked for?
Different projects, but it is earmarked.
Every, yeah, every bit of it, all of it's earmarked, it's going, and all of it's either for, we've been using it for the technology, the devices, more electronic devices in the classroom, HVAC systems, roof, the bathroom renovations, like the stuff that you saw that they're showing there. We've got some more projects coming up too, every bit of it.
It does help out with our local budget freeing up some money, does it?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That's why we're able to do, yes, sir, and that's a good point. That's why we're able to do some of the things that we're also doing with that, with our local money. That's freed up some money to do that. And, you know, we've had the questions before, you know, are you spending ESSER money on turf and all that? And no, we're not. I mean, that ESSER money specifically for classroom and buildings and that kind of thing. It has freed up other money for us to do things that have been waiting a while, like light poles at Drummond's Elementary and things like that. Lighting, LED lighting.
You brought up turf, where are we with that?
We're doing, I talked to him a number of times today, our contact, we're finalizing drawings for each one of them. And they should start digging by the end of this month or the beginning of February, they should be digging holes. Like pulling up all the old stuff. And Hunter's been helping me, that's where I can't handle it by myself. So Hunter's helping me. And we've estimated, we're going to save some money at one point, just the truckloads of dirt that they're going to take off those fields is just unreal. Like at one school, it's what, like 120 dump truckloads or something like that?
I think in Covington, they're 150, Monford's a little bit more in Brighton's at least because they have the least amount of crown on the field, but they're still looking at close to 100 truckloads of dirt to come out.
And so we're going to, well, we're planning, we're going to keep it in county. And we have a number of projects that we can start doing with it, you know. Fill in some areas that are falling in. You know, like the one thing that we talked about, and this isn't official, but you know, like the big ditch in Brighton between the parking lot and the football field? You know, Hunter's been talking about putting a big culvert in there, filling that dude up with dirt, making that, you know, straight all the way across, things like that, projects like that. We're working on other areas at all the other schools, areas that have some fill we need to do. So we're going to try to keep all that dirt in county. Because there's going to be a lot of it. Ma'am?
Where is it?
It's probably, well, once we dig it all up, it's probably a lot of it going to be stored over there in the Brighton area.
Correct, yeah. As a one, I know that they're wanting some of the farm in Covington, out where the baseball field is for future projects. Very minimal compared to what we expect to have. We do want to, again, like Dr. Conville mentioned, the ditch in Brighton, I know that was one where they could have a campus, where they could have, if you will, a grow field, where they could have tailgating area as well as, you know, safety concern there, that ditch. Their practice field does not have a watershed at all. I mean, it's just a swamp when it rains. We're hoping to be able to help that campus out by creating their practice facilities to, we can, they've got a state of the art place down there with just a little bit of help, you know, using some of these resources. And Monford, I know that they're, they've got a soccer, we've got a property that's where their soccer field is back behind the middle school that they're one day hoping to potentially have a future site maybe for a softball field for the high school that has a ravine that's washing off in there. And I know that the lagoon at the Brighton Elementary is one that they're looking to fill in, you know, this thing, you know. So we're really trying to use it to get it to its final place the best we can. But we do have plans to, if you will, stockpile it. So we have it for future, you know, projects, whether it's from erosion issues or, you know, dirt's not cheap.
And stadium, stadium lighting is coming in, should have it next month. Like everything else, the equipment didn't come in, they've been waiting on it because it was in Australia or China, wherever it was. So we finally started getting it in, so we'll start putting all that stadium lining up. And then the tracks will be done in the May. After the, you know, they'll be the last.
Correct.
Because we don't want to damage them. They'll be the last after everything else. So the plan is all the turf on all the high school fields by graduation. Yeah, so they'll be ready.
They felt comfortable with that. They did, they answered that question.
Right, anybody else have anything?
Just say, we'd keep Coach New's family in prayers.
Right.
They're having the funeral tomorrow afternoon and the visit stays tomorrow afternoon, five to seven, and a funeral Saturday, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he's going to be missed.
Absolutely, great man.
Anybody else?
Where is it?
Coach New.
No.
It's at Covington.
There was no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Clark, a second by.